We have now come to the additional business action items portion of the agenda. If I could get folks who are still having conversations to keep those outside or follow along as we're going to start our, um, the additional action items from our agenda.
Hi friends, we're about to get started. Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, so, uh, we are just going to go right into action item number one and I will turn it over to our VP.
I move approval of a joint operating agreement between Seattle Public Schools and Technology Access Foundation, partial waiver of board policy number 2190 with respect to Washington Middle School, an amendment to the student assignment transition plan for 2021.
Second the motion.
And this came through executive committee and our recommendation was for consideration?
That actually wasn't the text of the motion, the recommended motion number three.
Thank you, Chief Counsel Narver.
I'm sorry. I move that the school board approve the joint operating agreement between Seattle Public Schools and Technology Access Foundation as attached to this board action report, waive with respect to Washington Middle School, the provision in policy number 2190, highly capable services and advanced learning programs, that a self-contained cohort option is available in grades one through eight, and amend the student assignment transition plan for 2020 to 21 to include language that the STEM by TAF model at Washington Middle School will be implemented beginning in the twenty, twenty twenty-one, two thousand twenty twenty-one school year and that starting in fall two, twenty twenty, highly capable services for sixth grade students at Washington Middle School will be provided in a blended model rather than a cohort model.
Second the motion.
Thank you, and thank you for helping us making sure our process is on point, I appreciate that. Uh, the, the recommendation that came through the executive committee of the whole was for consideration, so I'm going to ask our staff to come up to the podium for any revisions and new information since introduction, um, at our January eighth legislative meeting.
Great. Thank you President DeWolf and directors, my name is Sherri Cox, Senior Advisor to Superintendent Juno, and I first would just like to honor all of the public comments that we heard tonight. There were some very heartfelt, um, comments made to us by parents and folks in our community, and I know this work is hard, it's hard for all of us. Um, I, I just want those particularly to acknowledge that, um, while we maybe haven't always served students as best we can in the past, SEA is a committed partner, that's our Seattle Education Association, is a committed partner in doing this work with us, uh, to make more equitable, uh, outcomes for all students. I'd also like to call out that our special education and our advanced learning departments have been a partner in this work as we're moving ahead looking at the TAF, uh, STEM by TAF, uh, curricular focus at Washington Middle School. I also want to give a special, uh, acknowledgement to some of the folks in the audience tonight in support of this work, Seattle Colleges, our Breakfast Group, Urban League, the Mayor's Office, the City of Seattle, uh, Constance Rice, and the Alliance are all in the audience tonight. I want to spend an extra minute or two thanking TAF. These strong women have stood with us through a long, difficult process. They've opened their school doors to SPS parents, staff, and to you directors, who unfortunately at times left TAF students feeling inadequate in comparison to our SPS students. These great TAF leaders have attended multiple community engagements with us that were at times heated and loaded with racially charged language. I'm hopeful that that was not our intent, and I just want us to remember that sometimes our impacts and our intent do not align. This is an opportunity for us to be in partnership with an organization with over a decade of a proven track record who wants to help us serve our students even better than we currently do, and to help us live up to our strategic plan, mission, and vision of creating students that receive a high-quality world-class education that prepares them for college, career, and community. TAF staff, I am honored to have you with us today, and I am hopeful that we can move past some of these experiences and that the TAF program, not program, the TAF, STEM by TAF curricular focus at Washington Middle School is the strongest TAF program in the state of Washington. I want to call out that there were, um, three small changes since, um, we were here at consideration. The first is on page ten in the bar, um, there was just a small, may have been a scripters area, but I want to call it out that it was listed that when we came before you, it was for approval when actually it was for consideration. I want to acknowledge that on page nineteen, section ten point three in the joint operating agreement, per Director Mack's questions about the capital work, we've added some clearer language in that section, and I want to call out that on page twenty-two, section eleven point two point six, per questions about, um, the procurement and decision-making process, we've cleaned up, uh, that language. I want to quickly reemphasize a couple of important points. Um, TAF is not a charter school and it's not privatization. This is a partnership to bring a curricular focus STEM to, in partnership with the industry leader in this work that shares our values. We are not dismantling HC services, I believe we're bolstering them. We are not dismantling the pathway to Washington Middle School. We are again, just proposing that we enter into a partnership with a proven organization. Washington Middle School is serving the HC students in the south, southeast, southwest corners of the city. It is not though, however, our most diverse cohort which we hear. We will continue to serve students who qualify for HC services both in and out of the cohort, and we have an outstanding record at serving students who need HC services in both places with our students in the cohort and out of the cohort, scoring on average in the ninety-fifth percentile or above on I'm going to conclude my comments and open it up for questions.
Thank you. Um, do directors have comments and questions, and let me just pause here to say for the process tonight, um, what we'll do is we'll have any questions or comments or concerns particularly specifically related to any portion of the staff presentation, then what I'd like to do is pause there and open the, uh, conversation up to the amendment. We'll, uh, ask Director Mack and Rivera Smith to guide us through any updates there, ask questions of, of those directors, uh, around that amendment, vote on that amendment, and then, once that amendment is voted on, then either we have a new motion as amended, or we stay with the current motion we're under right now. I will walk us through that as we go along, but I just wanted you to, there's a, there's a little bit of a, uh, process here. Sure.
Clarify, so I'm super clear before we start. So, we discuss the bar, then we discuss the amendment, and the amendment has to be voted on first because...
Because either, we will have an original motion and it needs to be amended.
It is an amendment to the bar, so we can't vote on them separately. Thank you.
Okay, Director Harris.
Uh, I have a question for Senior Advisor Cox first, and then I would like Chief Counsel Narver's, um, response to some of the things that we heard in public testimony, specifically number five on our handouts from Mr. Jackins and his testimony. To Senior Advisor Cox, something you just said piqued my curiosity.
Okay.
As I'm sure will not be a surprise to you, that we do a quote outstanding job in serving highly capable students both in and out of the cohort in southeast Seattle. What do we base that on, and if we base it on culturally inappropriate ESBA test, I'd like to push back on that, um, statement.
Thank you Director Harris for your question, and, um, unfortunately the ESBA test is the test that is available to us, and so when we utilize that data to look at how our students, um, both in the cohort and not in the cohort perform throughout the city, we see on average that our third through eighth graders are scoring in the ninety-fifth percentile and above on both the math and the reading ESBA, and I understand that the ESBA is fraught with all sorts of bias, um, but it is the test that is before us today.
And, and I just want to flag, uh, that is specifically about a larger conversation around highly capable services, so I want to be thoughtful about sticking to the TAF JOA.
I'm sorry, she said southeast Seattle.
Understood, I just want to make sure we're trying to keep our thoughts to this TAF JOA. Thank you.
Okay, and if we could have Counsel Narver address the issues that were brought up, number five on Mr. Jackins.
Number six maybe, which is the list of...
Okay, I've got number five on another list here, so maybe we're operating on the same.
All right.
A through G.
Got it. Uh, good evening Greg Narver, Chief Legal Counsel.
Can you clarify what you're asking? Are you asking him to...
Whether or not...
Answer all seven of these...
Whether or not, he has opinions on whether or not A through G are in fact facts.
Right, I want to be careful about the legal advice I give, I want to give in a privileged setting, but just to comment on, uh, statements about what state law may or may not require, I wa, I can give, uh, my reactions to, to these comments.
Appreciate the boundaries.
And of course...
We need guidance.
I'm seeing these for the first time this evening myself, but, uh, I will just say a few words. Um, the first, uh, statement is that the TAF proposal discriminates in the provision of educational services to families based on geographic residence. Uh, I disagree. Um, one thing that has been emphasized to the board in the past is that under current state law, there's no prescribed or required model for providing HC services. HC services are by law part of basic education, but, uh, and in fact, the Senate bill that was, uh, mentioned earlier, the report that goes with that makes explicit there are a range of ways of providing HC services. One is a cohort model, one's a blended classroom, there are others. State law right now does not require any particular model, and it doesn't restrict the ability of a district to move from one model to another. What this statement seems to suggest is that a cohort model is inherently superior and that taking it away in one part of the city is a form of discrimination. That's, that's just not a, a showing that's, that I believe is, is, uh, supported by the law. Either are acceptable models. What we have to have in place is a way of providing HC services. The second is that it is likely to create or aggravate racial imbalance at schools in violation of WAC three ninety-two, three forty-two, oh two five. That's a provision about site selection for schools, and that in considering a site for construction of a school, one of the factors to consider is that it can't create or aggravate racial imbalance. This site already exists. We're not establishing a new school, this is a change in curricular focus at this school. I don't believe this WAC provision provide, applies at all. Uh, it fails to meet the needs of students qualifying for highly capable services. There's been, uh, presentation to the board about how TAF provides those services in a blended classroom. TAF is aware of the legal obligation to meet the needs of HC students. Uh, I can't repeat what's already been presented to you on the way it does that. Um, there's a statement that this violates RCW twenty-eight three-two-oh-two-three-oh, which is the statute about a, a board approval of instructional materials. That's not what's before you right now. Again, this is a change in curricular focus. STEM school, uh, changing a school to a STEM curriculum is one of the ways under our policy that we can change curricular focus. This is different than approval of instructional materials as we went through, for example, with, uh, the Spanish instructional materials recently. Um, this says that, uh, suggestion that this improperly waives requirements for reporting and board approval of donations of resources. There were issues, uh, questions raised earlier about what TAF is bringing in terms of, uh, in-kind services, staff positions. Those are all called out explicitly in the contract, and I believe that by approving the contract as written, the board is meeting its requirements to approve the, uh, bringing of those resources by TAF. Um, violates state law regarding charter schools, uh, disagree completely. There's a specific state statute on what the requirements of a charter school are. It is a school that is established pursuant to the process laid out in that chapter with a charter. That's not what we're doing here. This isn't the establishment of a new school. It's a joint operating agreement similar to what TAF already has in federal way, and a change in curricular focus. And the last thing says it claims to serve students of color furthest from educational justice while ignoring alternatives such as reopening the African-American Academy and Indian Heritage High School. I don't think that's a legal issue, those are policy issues for the board to consider. So that's, that's a quick take on these issues.
Thank you Chief Counsel.
You're welcome.
Are there other directors who have questions or comments?
Thank you Chief Narver.
Particularly for this portion of the staff presentation or any revisions or updates that... I'm just meaning, I want to contain, um, particularly our questions and comments for this update, because at, at the certain point when the amendment is voted on up or down, we come back to the main motion, and so there will be more time for, so I just want to be thoughtful that, to try to be thoughtful about our time, because it is seven-thirty. Director Mack. If there are no other questions or comments, I will, uh, turn it over to Director Mack to introduce, um, your amendment.
Should I read the title as well as the motion or just the motion?
Um, you, uh, please read the motion.
Thank you. Um, I move approval of amendment one to the board action report, approval of a joint operating agreement JOA between Seattle Public Schools, SPS, excuse me, and Technology Access Foundation, TF, partial waiver of board policy number twenty-one ninety with respect to Washington Middle School, an amendment to the student assignment transition plan for the twenty twenty twenty-one, which, A, amends the underlying board action report to strike the following motion language, quote, "waive with respect to Washington Middle School, the provision in policy number twenty-one ninety, highly capable services and advanced learning programs, that, A, quote, self-contained cohort option is available in grades one eight through eight. B, substitutes the attached further amended version of the student assignment transition plan for twenty twenty twenty-one to include language that continues to guarantee highly capable students rising to sixth grade in the Washington HCC pathway assignment to another highly capable cohort program when they apply during open enrollment through May thirty-first, and supersedes the underlying board action report to the extent there are inconsistencies."
Do I have a second?
Second.
So Directors Mack and Rivera Smith, uh, invite you to give us updates on revisions or anything new from introduction, and then we'll open it up to questions, uh, and comments from board directors on amendment one. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, good evening. Um, as you may have read, if you read the updated, uh, bar, um, Director Rivera Smith and I updated it to include a number of articles of research, um, as well as expanded on the equity section, um, that we just discussed last, um, meeting. I hope you had a chance to read it. Um, there are in fact academically gifted students of all races and backgrounds, and the black and brown students that are at the intersection of race and giftedness are the ones that, in my opinion, we need to listen to. Um, Dr. Joy Lawson Davis, a gifted black scholar, advocate and author, writes that being gifted and talented and also African-American makes children double minorities, and the issues they face can be different than those faced by other gifted children. In testimony tonight, um, and in, uh, prior testimony, many black and brown parents have identified highly capable students, uh, spoke about the value that they place on the HCC program. There's a gentleman who spoke about his child was identified as a behavior problem instead of gifted, and, uh, several mo, mothers have spoken, um, up about their, upset about not feeling heard that their black child is academically gifted. In the resolution that we passed several years ago, um, the focus was on expanding advanced learning opportunities, not restricting them. We do need to reform and increase our advanced learning opportunities to ensure equitable access. The Advanced Learning Task Force has provided many recommendations to this end, um, and to remove the option from these students in this cohort of students, the rising sixth graders who are in fact fifty-three percent of color, which is a greater proportion than the rest of the, um, highly capable cohorts across the city. Uh, before we implement the recommendations would be ineptful. This amendment, uh, both supports the blended model at TAF, and it supports it, does not take away from that. Um, in fact, students would be initially assigned to Washington. Um, students would have to choose into the HCC, um, option if they want that, so it's, it's, it supports a both and, uh, solution where we can, um, support all of these students in providing an opportunity to pilot the, the blended model program as well as continue to provide these students access to the highly capable cohort program, which was designed for the academically gifted students. Um, this is, this is where I'm coming from, and, and I hope you consider supporting the amendment. Director Rivera Smith, do you have, um, thoughts to add?
Yeah, Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you, thank you for, um, for the explanation of the amendment, and thank you, uh, again to everybody who has emailed in, um, either for or against them, and it's been very eye-opening, honestly, to read all the emails, and it has definitely taught me a lot, um, hearing your stories, uh, again, for or against it. I, I want to be very honest about that. Um, as, uh, when we first developed this, I kind of saw it serving a single purpose, and to me, the purpose was to be consistent with our application of HCC services and make sure that we are not, um, we are not taking it away from one population that has, that has that, that has it in their service model, and it seemed like, you know, it itself was like an inequity to say, sorry southeast and south, you don't get that option anymore. Um, I felt like that was unfair, and again, this is just looking strictly at, at it, looking at it as this is services that they have been promised in this program, just saying we were promised services in special ed, or we promised services in ELL. These are, these are, uh, an agreement we have with those families, and I wanted to make sure that we were consistent across the city with that. But, again, so, it, I've grown since then, and I also see it, uh, as more as like when we have these families come up here, who are families of color, um, who have very passionate stories about what difference it's made to have that opportunity, and it's, it's hard to take this, make this conversation separated from the larger conversation of is our service model the best one, is the cohort, the idea that we want to carry on with. So, this amendment is not so much a perpetuation of trying to grow that model, this is just trying to keep consistent for this one class, this one grade that is coming into it. Um, I cannot wait to finally talk about HCC again and our advanced learning services as a whole, as its own subject, that we can explore and dive into, and finally, you know, some, someday we'll get those, um, Advanced Learning Task Force recommendations that are already finished, and I'm not sure why we haven't really seen them yet, and that's a different story, but anyway, I look forward to having those in our hands, um, along with, I know the task force that's been, um, not the task force, the advisory committee that's been put together to look at that, um, and find out how we implement them. That's a conversation I can't wait to have, I can't wait for it, but right now, this is simply on, this is simply to again, try to keep us consistent with the services we're giving to that program. Um, it does not systematically remove any cohort or students from Washington, they can still go there, they can. I won't be disappointed if nobody uses this amendment, like if we pass it and everyone decides to go to TAF, awesome, that's, that's great, if they've chosen that, if they are willing to, to not want that cohort model for their student, that's fine, and they can still do that. Um, this does not give them an option that they didn't, that they weren't already supposed to have as far as they can go to, anybody can go to their neighborhood school, um, and they, and these students have been promised this model, um, they already had that, it's not giving them any extra privilege. Um, so, and what it does do again is it just gives that one to sixth, incoming sixth graders, of this one pathway, um, the option to keep that, keep that model that they have been promised. Um, and then later we will talk about that, um, as its own subject, but thank you.
Thank you Director Mack and Director Vera Smith. Uh, opening it up to directors for comments, questions, and concerns. I saw Director Rankin first, and then Director Hersi.
Uh, thank you. I, um, I just kind of want to clarify about your statement, Director Vera Smith, about the cohort being a, a promise. I don't know where that is, like, we are mandated and should serve students identified as highly capable, and we currently deliver, offer the cohort model as a delivery system in addition to being able to, but I don't know that it's a promise, like, and you, well, I'm just, you mentioned special education students as well, and they do not have the promise of any sort of delivery model, in fact, it changes on them all of the time. Um, so I'm just wondering where that promise part comes in. The, the, the mandate and the, um, thing that I take very seriously is serving all of the students at a certain level, but the, a particular model, so I'm just, just wondering about that. And then I am wondering about in the original version of the amendment, it guaranteed transportation, and now it says should transportation be provided, so I'm wondering what the, what the change was? It didn't change, okay, may I'm just not finding it then. So there's still...
The, the, uh, the assumption, um, from my understanding and Mr. Narver's interpretation, uh, stated is that, uh, with the guarantee of assignment, that transportation would go along with it.
Oh, because it's the pathway.
Right.
Gotcha, 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 okay.
That it's not, we are not, we don't need to specifically call that out.
Gotcha. Um, okay, and then my other question is about space available in our other HC cohorts, um, and how, uh, that any, any student can apply to a different school other than their own for, during open enrollment, um, in terms of having access, so I know this is the pathway, but I'm still, just I guess wondering about, like, say a student decides that they do want the cohort and they want to go to Madison because it's closer than Robert Eaglestaff. Is there space, can they do that if they can get themselves there, or like how?
My understanding from working with, um, Ashley Davies' team and the Enrollment Services Department, uh, Enrollment Planning, sorry, is that, uh, currently the only likely space is at Robert Eaglestaff, so we would be providing transportation to students, um, to Robert Eaglestaff.
And can I clarify also that there is space available there because a K eight school is being moved?
Yes, there, there is space available at that because we're...
That was also a promise made by the district of a native focus school being at that location.
Yeah, and we've, and yes, the previous board approved moving Lipton Springs to, um, the newly renovated Webster Building, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Director Rankin, any more comments or questions?
No, I know, thanks.
Director Hersi, and then Director Vera Smith. Oh, do you want to, do you want to respond, Director Vera Smith?
I was just going to respond to the, the question about the promise. I mean, we're kind of talking semantics here, because, um, what I, what I was referring to was in policy, it does say that a cohort is available, um, and it wouldn't be to the southeast and south quadrant if it was, if it was removed from, well, with the TAF model, it won't be there. Um, so that's what I was speaking to, um...
I'm making a distinction between available and guaranteed, which I think as the policymakers for the district is important.
Yeah. Yeah, right now, the policy, again, we're not, we're not even talking about that policy right now. We're going to do that, I know, at some point. But as it's understood in the stands right now, it's, it's means that that's what, that's what they, they get, you know? I mean, I don't know which word is probably more palatable, but that's how they understand it.
Thank you. Director Hersi, then Director Mack. Director Hersi, how does your answer?
I was just going to respond to her space available question that you were asking.
Please.
If that's okay. So in our current policy, students can option in to another school with space available. However, the district has not moved the wait lists for those students. This only requires that if there is, is in fact space available, that they do get a spot. And we don't have that potential cap saying that there isn't space available and they don't get the spot. So they can still, if this doesn't pass, students could still apply. And, you know, we've been saying that there's space available at Robert Eagle Staff, presumably we would honor that, regardless of whether or not it passes. But the, the, the question of whether or not the district will do that is a, if, if we don't pass this, then they don't have the guarantee.
So my other question too is that there's concern about Washington Middle School being under-enrolled. And in the past, that has meant that the district will not allow students to opt into another school. So should that be the case for incoming sixth graders, do they actually have this option whether or not this amendment passes?
Those are really good questions for, for us to think through. When I say space, I mean physical space. We have often moved or not moved wait lists for not just the physical capacity, but because we, thank you, you're like setting me up here, for the staffing capacity in a building. And so we have historically chosen, for the most part, there may be exceptions, not to pull enough students out of one school that would require us to then say to, for example, sorry, Meanie Middle School, we're now going to also, because we've let your students leave, we are now also going to pull one of your teachers. And so we balance the staffing and the physical capacity of a building when making those decisions about wait lists. I hope that...
And while I'm, would that supersede an amendment? Because if we say, well, this amendment makes this available to you, and then enrollment says, actually, no, guaranteed space no matter what, and then, and then Washington Middle School would lose staff? Or guaranteed space and Washington Middle School would remain unaffected even if they lost students? This is, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about all of the schools retaining the staff that they need.
I mean, I think...
And about us not making more promises to people that are not actually going to be options.
I believe that should there, should this amendment move forward and there, I think you are guaranteeing those students the right to go to a different school, which would then leave us with basically two choices. We would have to continue to mitigate in the dollars that would, that would require to keep the staff whole, or yes, Washington Middle School would lose staff if a large enough number of students chose to go to Robert Eagle Staff.
Thank you, Sheri. Director Hersi, then Director Hampson. Sorry, Director Harris, then Director Hampson.
Thank you. So last time we had this conversation, I asked, had there been any community engagement done knowing that Robert Eagle Staff is probably going to be the selected site that most people? So could someone please speak to the community engagement and what that looks like?
Hello? Oh, sorry. I did, I did, I, well, part of that was I, I went and met with the principal, as I said earlier. I'm sorry, I did go, I went to Robert Eagle Staff last week, and I met with Principal Campbell. And last night, I went to their PTSA general membership meeting. And both times spoke upon this amendment or this, you know, because they, a lot of them, you know, they're very aware of what's going on. And I mean, I don't, I don't know, I mean, Principal Campbell was very understanding of that, you know, if this passes, then she'll get more. And she didn't, you know, she, I don't want to speak for her at all, but I, I believe that she is serving all of her students very well there. She did not let me know of any, you know, any outright dissatisfaction with that. She, you know, she, I think she's, she has her own opinions on the programs and kind of, again, like I, I'm really wary of speaking for her, but she understands that that's what would happen. And the families I spoke to there were also, you know, overall supportive of, well, again, you know, students, they already have HCC there, so it's not like we're putting things that aren't already there there. You know, they already have it, so it's not like we're sticking HCC somewhere it wasn't. They, they, again, and we're talking about numbers, there's, what is it, a hundred and fifteen total incoming HCC eligible students next year as a sixth grade class. The odds of all of them opting out is, is highly, highly unlikely. It could be as low as zero, as high as one fifteen, I suppose. But, and again, this purely goes as space is available. If, if, you know, Robert Eagle Staff has ten spots, they get at most ten of them. If anyone else has any spots, it's what they can fit there, we're not going to overcapacity anybody here.
So you, you could also appreciate that, to me, that does not meet the bar that we have set for ourselves in terms of community engagement. So while I appreciate the effort that you put in, I do not think going forward as this board, as we have committed to doing a better job of community engagement with our families across this city, that that meets the bar in any way, shape, or form.
Yes, so what I'd love to do is more community engagement, oh yeah, I mean, I totally agree. I think that we need, we need to have a high bar for our community engagement efforts, did what I could.
Thank you. Any more questions, Director Hersi?
Please, sorry.
I, I have full respect for the feelings around the community engagement. We've heard from testimony a fair amount that there, there's unhappiness with how community has been engaged. And we heard more than once that the families that are highly capable didn't feel engaged in the conversation until late. So I, I, I feel as if we, unfortunately, knowing that, or believing from my perspective, that the TAF model and the TAF opportunity is an amazing opportunity. And I, I do believe that in fact, students that are highly capable will be well-served there, as well as all students, that it's, that it has a great opportunity. I think that, that we've, we've had a challenge through the whole process in communicating and supporting and getting everyone on board. This amendment simply provides the opportunity that all the other students in the city have to a highly capable cohort site. It does not require that they go, it simply provides them the same opportunity that the other highly capable students have.
Thank you, Director Mack. Do you have any more questions, Director Hersi?
Not at this time.
Director Harris.
I'm going to pass and let Director Hampson go and follow her, if I might. Thank you, sir.
Well played, Director Harris. It's very difficult for me to see this as anything but a guarantee of flight. And I'm really pretty troubled with the amendments and my perspective that this is a pretty masterful job at tokenizing a really small group, a really small community of color within the existing cohort to preserve an option for families that quote-unquote are wary of TAF and the ability of TAF as a model, which you've just stated, Director Mack, that you think is fully capable of meeting the needs of highly capable students, which having spent hours and hours with TAF staff at the school down in Federal Way, I'm incredibly excited about the opportunity for Seattle Public Schools to be really investing in project-based learning as a way to provide proven differentiated education that will in fact meet the needs of our highly capable students and all students in that building, and do it in an integrated fashion, which is the obligation that we have to our entire educational community. And I, it's very difficult to, to listen to some of the, the, there's a lot of co-opting and appropriation of equity language for this purpose that I find deeply troubling.
Thanks, Director Hampson. Director Harris.
Senior Advisor Cox, what kind of space is available at Robert Eagle Staff Middle School, do we know?
Director Harris, I have that number in that orange folder over there.
And while she's looking that up, I would ask, whose responsibility is it to help do community engagement? Is it the board member's responsibility? Or is it staff's responsibility to assist the board members as elected public officials? And did any staff ask to assist? Whether they agree with an amendment or not, it's a question of resourcing and part-time volunteers, et cetera, with respect to community engagement. I, that's not a rhetorical question, it's a very deeply held question for me.
Well, not to butt in, I think we have two staff, we have a superintendent and Andrew Medina, who are our employees. So I don't, we don't necessarily have the ability to direct staff to do our community engagement for us, that's outside of our legal authority as a board member. What I will say is, if I'm looking at the presentation of the community engagement, I think we've done a pretty thorough job of trying to be thoughtful about community engagement. And I think that, while certainly if people are not happy with the result, we did what we said we were going to do, which is go out and be really thoughtful about targeting universalism in our conversations and making sure we were speaking to families of color, or making sure we were having these targeted groups. So I think that's a model to go off of, and we don't have any staff. We have the superintendent and Andrew Medina, that's our, our employees.
I'm ready. I don't have a precise answer, but in consulting with my experts over there, we believe that the, well, actually, I know this, the capacity at Robert Eagle Staff Middle School is a thousand students. And we believe that with the removal, with moving Lipton Springs into its own building, and also the decline in enrollment, we will have approximately eight hundred and fifty students at Robert Eagle Staff Middle School, so that's approximate numbers. And again, that only takes into account space, that does not take into account staffing.
And are there policies and procedures specifically to mitigation of schools and staff and consolidating boundaries, e.g. Cleveland, Rainier Beach, et cetera, the same concept that was just brought up here? Or is that just what we do, quote-unquote, our practices?
I don't think I understand your question, Director Harris, could you repeat it for me?
Are there specific policies and procedures for protecting school staff in mitigation moving from one school to another? That was brought up in the earlier conversation about impacts of other schools that Director Rankin so well put out. My recollection from two or three years ago, quote-unquote, it's just how we do it, that it's not in policy and procedure.
I am not aware of any policies or procedures, and I look to my brilliant colleagues along the wall who may have a different understanding. I do know that sometimes when you all make decisions to move growth boundaries, you will sometimes grandfather students in, but I can't recall any of those times where there was a clause to protect the staffing at the other school. So I, I can't speak with certainty, I can only speak to the best of my memory and understanding that. So I, I don't think I probably did a great job of answering your question, but I don't see anybody offering to come to my assistance either. So you're on your own, pure and cox.
And I just want to be mindful, it is seven fifty-six, we've been meeting about this for forty-five minutes almost, so I want to be thoughtful if there's any final questions, comments, or concerns about the amendment. Director Rankin?
With, with the, the, sorry, just had to glitch, just like you, Director Mack, it's earlier, I totally blinked. With the, so eight hundred and fifty students, I know that right now, Robert Eagle Staff is overcapacity, and there are portables at a brand-new school.
Yes.
Does the, the, the move of Lipton Springs and the relief of that many students on the building, given that it's over, overcapacity, are there neighborhood students that, I'm, I'm wondering about, I guess, neighborhood assignment students, yeah, how that?
Um, we've never turned away an attendance area or neighborhood student, so that's why we have beautiful, brand-new buildings like Robert Eagle Staff Middle School with portables is because we are committed to serving the attendance area students. So we are, have also committed to removing those portables from in front of those beautiful murals. Superintendent Juno has made it very clear to Chief Podesta over there that those portables will leave the Robert Eagle Staff campus this summer. And so the thousand number that I gave you is, is the actual building capacity, not including the portables? Now, it's not to say that should our enrollment be off, and should this amendment pass, that there would not eventually be a need for portables to come back onto that campus.
Thanks, Director Rankin, anymore? Director Hampson?
I just wanted to add that I think the fifty-three percent students of color in the rising sixth grade class, while factually correct, is not consistent with the breakdown we look at, is not as relevant when we break it down and look at students further from educational justice. And, and particularly, in fact, when students who are further from educational justice are those that are, that are not well-represented, not even close to proportionally represented in the HCC cohort, that that is not a, a good representation of that rising sixth grade class.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Any final comments or questions before we move on to the vote? All right, Ms. Scheck, roll call, please.
Director Hampson?
For the vote on Amendment One.
Nay. Director Harris?
Abstain.
Director Hersi?
Nay.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Nay.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Nay.
This amendment has not passed with a vote of one to four to one.
Two, I think it was two. Was two approved?
Sorry, two. Two, four, to one.
Thank you, Ms. Scheck. Okay. Now we will return to the original motion. So if directors have any final, final burning comments, questions, or concerns, thank you very much, Sheri, for sticking through this tonight. So want to just open it up again before we vote on the, the original motion? If there's any comments, or questions, or concerns, to elevate those now. This is the original underlying motion, which Shonda read at the very beginning. Director Rankin?
Yeah, I have, I mean, I know we're already getting late, and I don't need to go into a whole thing. But I do have some questions that have yet to be answered, I think. I want, or would ask, either, either how, or that we do include, or is there something in place to include the current Washington Middle School teachers in the planning and implementation, should this go forward? I know that, well, okay, I'm going to go on a tangent for a minute. I testified in front of the board in 2015, it was when my student was a first grader. He's now a fifth grader, and then I have a second grader also. I, and I testified that my observation was how often we have situations in Seattle Public my observation was how often we have situations in Seattle Public Schools where the issue isn't as much the what of the issue, but the how. And these fires go up because of the way communities are treated, or not engaged, or feel blindsided. And as a very new board member, I feel really frustrated to be put in the middle of a decision-making process, to be at the tail end of it where the decision's being made, knowing how many people have felt hurt by how this has rolled out, regardless of the merits of the program. And I think that that hurt and harm done to our communities has overshadowed us being able to have the discussion about this agreement and this program coming to Washington Middle School. And so, and I've, over the last several weeks, have had the opportunity, well, we've gotten a lot of emails, both for and against, and nuanced in between, but I've also had the opportunity to talk to teachers at Washington Middle School. And they, I think, the priority for them is to be included as this rolls out. And I think that not only to honor that community, but also because they're the experts on their students. And they, they see the harsh segregation between the two communities. They see the struggles. They know, but they also know where all those students' strengths are and the strength of their community. And they want, they want what's best for their students and for their school. And so my ask is, can we have something that assures everybody that educators that, and I know maybe they won't all decide to stay, but the educators that do stay will be part of how this rolls out into their school. And I think it's not only in the best interest of the teachers and the way that they've been treated, but also in the best interest of the success of this should it go forward.
Thank you for all of that, Director Rankin. And I, I tried to make it clear last time and then at our committee of the whole that we know we blew it, especially with our educators at Washington Middle School as far as the process goes. We, I committed then, I will commit to you again, that we still have some healing to do with that, with the teachers at Washington in particular. I do know that TAF, TAF's model will not be successful if the teachers at Washington Middle School don't lift this work with us. And what I shared last time is that President Tamayo in the audience here spoke in one-on-one conversations with Washington Middle School staff, and they are, for the most part, in support of the TAF model. They're still really angry at the district, and so we have healing to do. But TAF is committed to working and building the model at Washington Middle School that best serves the community of Washington Middle School, and I mean the whole community. So for example, I know you visited TAF at Sahale, which looks very different than some of the other TAF models because the, the work is built with the community to make it the strongest, it's going to be the strongest in the state, TAF services possible. And so they will not only be part of, like, a token part of the process, they will be the process that goes forward to build what TAF at Washington Middle School looks like. And we've got an amazing new principal at Washington Middle School who is committed to doing whatever the superintendent asks of her. And so while TAF was not necessarily her idea to come to the school, she is excited for this fraught process to be done with so that she can build this amazing model at Washington Middle School to best serve all students in a rigorous, rich, project-based learning environment. So I hope that answers your question.
Kind of, I maybe would like to see it in writing, but the, in terms of the healing, I know a lot of us have talked about that. I would just respectfully ask that somebody takes ownership over that, that we're not saying, oh, yes, yes, there's going to be healing.
The superintendent and I are committed.
Somebody to own that process and give us an update about, about it.
Yeah, we're committed to that.
And then the last thing that I want to address is, so I did have the opportunity, TAF, they very graciously allowed me to visit yesterday morning because I was sick when my colleagues visited. And I took, I invited to go with me a highly capable Washington Middle School parent, and, and we both were really excited about what we saw. And it was really fun to go with her, even though on the drive down, I was like, what if this was the worst idea ever? But what I would like to ask is that our, our state, state-directed mandate is that we identify and serve highly capable students. And in paper, that's going to happen. And as I saw at TAF, my own student who is highly capable, I think, would love this model. But I would like to ask, and I think that it's not unreasonable, that we have, and I know that, I talked to a teacher at TAF who was teaching seven math levels. She did say she preferred not to do it that way, but that she did, in this one class, have seven levels. And one student in particular was quite accelerated and actually chose to do some independent work and stay with her cohort because she really enjoyed some of the collaborative work. And that was a choice made with, with the child and parents. And so that kind of flexibility is really exciting. And I know that we have heard here that we will not have a span of that big of levels in our math classes, that there won't be more than two, I believe.
Correct.
But I would ask that as it is our direction from the state to identify and serve highly capable students, that we still have some kind of, I don't want to say tracking, but reporting back that we are providing that still, because we're all saying that that's what's going to happen. And I know in the ideal situation, everybody will do, you know, differentiation. And, you know, I saw at TAF how engaged students were at all levels, and I was really excited. And not in front of computer screens, as I've seen talked about. They were engaged together with, with some of the most enthusiastic instructors, honestly, that I have seen. And I've been in and out of a lot of, a lot of schools. But I do think that, given that changes to the highly capable cohort are being proposed, the beginning of that process is happening, and it's going to be a long, slow process, except for at Washington Middle School, I think that it's kind of only fair and responsible of us to find some way to say what level of math or acceleration students are getting in the subjects that they're currently getting and that we say we're providing access to. So I don't know what that looks like, but I am the chair of the instruction committee, so I think that's really important to our families.
I, I couldn't agree more. And so there's a couple of things. There's a formal way that every year we report back to OSPI in the state how we are serving our students who require highly capable services across our system. So that report comes to you, I don't remember the month, but it's a backwards look at how we serve students. So that's kind of an official way. But I think more importantly, and to your point, is Deanie Barry in our Advanced Learning Department is sitting back there. And what, one of the things with TAF that we as a learning organization are most excited about is to learn how are they serving highly capable, or students with highly capable service needs in that blended model? So what is it about project-based learning that we can expand across the system as we are looking to make other changes possibly to the cohort? And so we're really enthusiastic about TAF for multiple reasons, but our Advanced Learning team is excited to dig in and do this work alongside of TAF, to learn from the experts at TAF, to bring our expertise. I mean, we are experts as well. And so how do we learn from each other to, again, build the strongest TAF at Washington Middle School program?
Thank you, Sherri.
I just really want to know that our, particularly our parents of color who have testified that their students did not get recognized, did not get access in their neighborhood school, that we are, that we can show that we're not figuring it out with them, that we can say, this child is getting math two years ahead as is appropriate for them.
I'm more about figuring out, like, the best instructional strategies, but I understand what you're saying, yes.
With my parent ears, that sounds squishy. So I just, I, I really think that this has the capability to do right by all of these students, and I just want to make sure that we have a way to, to show that
We are doing right.
They're, they're doing, they're getting that access.
And we're committed to that. Thank you.
Okay, Director Hersi, and then Director Harris. And it has been an hour officially, so I would love us to get to the vote by 25 after.
Thanks. I do want to make a very clear and public request that we have some form of lessons learned after this that we share, not only internally but externally, because a lot of families, whether they are pro or con against TAF coming into our buildings, the southeast does not win when we mess this up. And I need to say that again. The southeast does not win when we mess this up. This process, especially walking into it as a new board director, was wildly unacceptable. And I know that we've all had these conversations, but I just want to make it very clear that this is an area of our city that has been historically marginalized in numbers of ways. And I am sitting here looking at families in my community and in my district, and my heart hurts for them because, from their perspective truly, things are changing, and it feels like yet another opportunity for the district to take something away. That said, I am not in favor of moving forward without a very clear plan with how we are going to do that healing, because healing, as Director Rankin said in another capacity, is very squishy. And I want to make sure that we are having thoughtful conversations about what that looks like and moving forward because, again, the southeast does not win when we mess things up.
Thank you, Director Hersi. Director Harris?
I'm going to read a statement because this has cost me a great deal of sleep and probably added to my high gray hair factor. And I would say to Director Hersi, the southeast does not win. Respectfully call you out, the Seattle Public School System does not win when we don't do it right.
Totally.
And we break trust. You'll recall that I, as the former board president, signed the initial memorandum of understanding to bring TAF to Washington Middle School. TAF is an extraordinary program with an extraordinary team. I emphasize team. It is not just about Trish Chizik, but her team, a team I very, very much respect and have watched closely for over 10 years, and certainly respect their grace and tenacity. These folks have put up with no end of bureaucratic stumbles. As you know, we blew our date of September 2019 to have a joint operating agreement and had not really explored or transparently gave the reasons that Washington Middle School was chosen, including that it's next door to opportunities for community-based organizations in Seattle Central College. The issue has also been conflated with the delivery of the highly capable cohort services and the dismantling of that program ostensibly over the next six years to disperse the cohorts back to neighborhood schools. Unfortunately, the ramp-up in communication with affected communities, families, potential students, teachers at Washington Middle Schools, and indeed taxpayers was less than. Was it intentional? No, I do not believe that. But as an elected citywide board director, I am very disappointed and frankly angry that the board was not kept as surprised as we should have been and had several false starts. Let me be clear, this is not a takeover or a charter school. And my apologies on the record for my violent language at the last board meeting, talking about doing away with those incorrect memes, appropriately called out by President DeWolff and a couple of email corresponders. This issue has become extraordinarily polarized, but what remains is all communities disappointed with our communication and timing. I am not convinced that we have the resources for professional development to disperse all of our HCC students, and again, I detest those phrases, HCC labeling, to neighborhood schools, and will continue to insist on budget numbers for this six-year plan. Indeed, thus far, we have systematically destroyed advanced learning programs and ALO programs and Walk to Math and other school-based opportunities, one school at a time, in the dark, without community input over the years. And somehow, folks are surprised that the HCC cohort ballooned. And our teachers, our extraordinarily talented teachers, will have as many as five grade levels in one class without additional staff. And ironically, HCC has no special curriculum, but only two years of acceleration. Does that mean that if and when, with this six-year plan, our HCC students will be dispersed, will have to rehear and re-listen for two years what they've already been over? For 20 years, several task forces have studied this issue and suggested different ways to identify and coach more students of color and lower socioeconomic status to gain entry to the HCC formerly known as the APP program. Yet we have not changed our ways. Perhaps, yes, finally, at long last, the recent recommendations of the Advanced Learning Task Force will this time be listened to and implemented. There's been a great deal of polarity in the communication in this issue, both with respect to the HCC cohort dispersal and the TAF Washington Middle School. And unfortunately, its setup is a win-lose proposition, and there is much on the continuum of public comments and input. The devil is truly in the detail, and to require S-Back testing, a culturally inappropriate test as a gatekeeping test, is wrong and unjust. And then to the press, columnists, taxpayers, texts from the mayors, bills submitted in the legislature that are ill-drafted and unfunded, and incorrect information out in the blogosphere and Facebook land, all extraordinarily distressing and depressing. Frankly, this choice, to me, pales from our conversations and my vote on Amplify Science Adoption. And please know that I have paid heck every day for that vote. A Hobson's choice is a free choice in which only one thing is offered. The phrase is said to have originated back in 1544, 1631 with Thomas Hobson, a livery stable owner in Cambridge, England, who offered customers the choice of either taking the horse in his stall nearest to the door or taking none at all. So all that said, what is Harris going to vote? I was going to vote yes for Amendment One. I changed my vote based on the comments from my colleagues to abstain because for the southeast central quadrant not to have the same opportunities as the rest of the city feels to me unjust. But we are against the wall on timing for the student assignment plan, and planning is well underway for next year's, and next year, and these decisions cannot be delayed. I will vote yes for TAF Washington Middle School bar. Why? Because we, what we are doing now is not working, and we have to do something different. And I believe this is a bit of a pilot plan, much like the Advanced Learning Task Force has suggested. What works, what doesn't work, we can learn from this. And with respect to your lessons learned, I could not agree with you more, Director Hersi. We have much to learn in how we roll this out. Excuse me, I'm speaking. Thank you. But TAF will have additional teacher training, additional funds, smaller class size, the institute this summer, mentorships, internships, and they'll teach differently than just two years of acceleration. And I have to tell you, the atmosphere at Sahale Middle School is extraordinary and exciting. TAF is well aware of the microscope on it, as is the leadership at Washington Middle School, our staff at Central, and indeed this board. Well-appreciated, a great deal of trust has been given us. And recall that Washington Middle School is coming off a very, very difficult 2018-19 school year. But I do have faith that we can and we will do better. I believe this is ultimately better. Please know, I've read every email, and I am happy that we are going to be taking a look at the different neurodiverse needs of each and every one of our children in the future. My hope is, as we discuss these difficult issues, we focus on growth for all students, not test scores, and we change the paradigm in our arc of opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. Director Hampson?
So I just wanted to follow up on a couple of questions that I had during the introductory period for this action, for this bar.
Just to, sorry, just to flag, we are at 8:21. Just to, sorry, just to flag, we are at 8:21, just to keep you.
How many minutes do you need?
I was hoping we'd get to this by 8:25.
Now, how many minutes do you need?
I need a few moments.
So my concerns were about sustainability of the program, about capacity of the TAF organization. So I spent a lot of time with the organization, looking through their audits, their financials, and spending time with the program itself at TAF at Sahale. And was very well satisfied, looking all the way back to their New Markets project that actually built an incredible building that houses multiple other tremendous organizations and which is free and clear and provides them a really nice asset base. And from a fiscal standpoint, was well satisfied that this is an organization that not only has an incredible ability to transfer, to transfer actual monetary capital, meaning they're not, they're, they're creating revenue sources that are being transferred into the school environment. They're not keeping them for themselves. So they're not enriching themselves as an organization as a, as a byproduct of doing this work. All of that work is going directly into the schools. And their operations are pretty, their income statement is actually pretty, pretty minimal. But that's not because of lack of capacity, but because of how they do their work. So I was very impressed by that and also talked a lot about fundraising that they would need to do to maintain it. And I believe that they will not only bring that with them in terms of the, their capacity with respect to their relationships and industry and thereby connecting our community finally in the city of Seattle to industry. But they will also provide some additional social capital that we desperately need in Seattle Public Schools and that, that this is an incredible opportunity for us to have a truly good working partnership, which I think is something that we need to greatly improve upon within this district. I think one of the, the biggest challenges that remain ahead of us that were brought up earlier have to do with professional development. However, that is not unique in this environment, that the, as we get into ethnic studies, since time immemorial, implicit bias, all of those topics require an incredible level of partnership and cooperation with our teachers' union, among other unions that, that we have and are, are lucky to have partnerships with in the school district. And we have a lot of work to do there and it's not unique to this situation. But we are going to have to, to learn how to work together as a board, board working with, with union, waving at you back there, Michael Tamayo, to make sure that we can come together. Schools are successful when they come together as school communities. And we need to be able to provide the support for them to do that. And we also are morally and legally required to provide advanced learning opportunities. And I'm incredibly excited about this as an opportunity to help us learn how to do that in this district in an equitable way, because thus far, as everyone has pointed out, we have failed. And I think that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you Director Hampson. Are there other directors with comments, questions, or concerns? Director Rivera Smith?
I don't know if anyone else here did, but I actually did reach out to the Federal Way School Board because I wanted to inquire how that relationship works with TAF. I didn't hear back from anybody, but that's okay, because what I was going to ask them though, same, watch, I'll make this request now, is I do want to like, you know, I think like Director Hampson was saying, we want to make sure that we're still engaged, because we want this to be successful, definitely. And I, I'm pretty confident that, that our staff and teachers there can make that happen. I just want to make sure that we are still, because that was the question, is how does the school board of Federal Way kind of, how is the relationship with the TAF organization and the school? Maybe there was nothing to say, maybe that's why I didn't hear from anybody, because there wasn't any like, nothing really, there was no there there. But I want to make sure that we are still kept engaged, especially since this is going to be a huge learning curve for everybody and how we can support that, what we can do, even as far as like, like Director Harris was saying earlier, how we can do our community engagement, help be a part of that process as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I just have three things. When I was elected to the, to president of this board, the two things I wanted to at least be very clear about to the community, particularly for my decision-making, was the seven generations principle, which says that what we do now must create positive, sustainable, and meaningful solutions for today and seven generations into the future. I believe this does satisfy that for me as far as being long-term thinking and thinking, you know, how, how will this affect seven generations in the future? The other thing, again, in my decision-making, is, is our alignment to and centering of our strategic plan. I think that this work does that and I see that that is why, another reason why I would support this. And I think the last thing, just to say, is to me, the headline for, you know, if this passes, the headline tonight or tomorrow should actually be that Seattle Public Schools, in our commitment to our innovative strategic plan, have voted successfully to desegregate a middle school in the Central District. That is the headline. So I'm looking forward to this vote. I'm going to stop talking and Ms. Scheck, roll call please.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hershey?
Proudly aye.
Director Mack?
Abstain.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
This motion has passed with a vote of six to zero to one.
Thank you.
Thank you Directors.
I, I would like to invite Trish up to the podium, please. If you'd like to provide any comments or remarks, maybe a glass of water for how long we've been talking about this.
I stepped out a couple of times and got water. I actually wrote two speeches, depending on how you vote. So I'm glad I get to read this one. First of all, Team TAF, which is everybody that came here to support staff, please stand up.
Yeah, you can raise your hand too, wow.
Stand up, come on.
Thank you.
I want to thank you guys for, for hanging this long, for this moment in history for us. This is very cool. So thank you for approving the partnership between TAF and Seattle Public Schools. We are excited to dive into planning with all the stakeholders, to transform Washington Middle School into a school that will encourage innovation, push the limits of what's expected, deliver curriculum in a way that is relevant to the real world needs and goals of students, and create an environment that promotes academic success for all students, particularly those furthest away from educational justice. Through these eight months, we have had ups and downs moving this forward. But what remains clear today is that everyone involved kept equity and student growth in the forefront. The Seattle Public Schools staff has been great to work with. They are thoughtful, professional, sometimes brutally honest. And TAF is proud to officially be called your partner. On behalf of TAF, I want to thank the board for taking the time to learn about the STEM by TAF model, to learn about TAF and our team, for being honest about where we fell down in this process and your willingness to keep going, and acknowledging the enormous amount of work the district has in front of it to ensure equitable practices throughout the system. And we're really proud to be a partner with you in that. And as I'm known to say, sometimes too often, this is the work. So let's get going, because our baby shouldn't have to wait another day. Principal Hunt? Yes. Be ready. I'm glad you're ready, because it is time. Let's go.
Thank you. We're just going to break for about a two-minute recess to do the signing so we can officially do it. So excited and certainly excited about the celebrations, but I do want to make sure we can get to the rest of our action items. So for Directors, please return to the dais. Wait, wait, let me just, let me just call a second. Okay, we're returning from recess at 8:35 PM. I am going to call for a motion on action item number two. And I just want to elevate something for our audience. Action items number two. If, if conversations could move outside, please, thank you everybody. For action items two, three, and four, these did not go through committee. They were presented to the executive committee and we moved them out of executive committee and just straight to the agenda tonight for introduction and action. So that's why you're seeing these on here as introduction and action for numbers two, three, and four. So I will turn it over to Vice President Hampson.
I move that the school board approve the 2020 to 21 school year calendar as attached to the board action report with any minor non-substantive additions, deletions, or modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second the motion.
Okay, Chief Bergy is, oh, and the, again, these did not, these did not come through committee, so there was no recommendation. They're here for us to stew as intro and action tonight. So I'll turn it over to Chief Bergy for your comments. Thank you.
Joel Lynn Bergy standing in for Chief Clover Cod tonight. So by way of background, the district is required under its collective bargaining agreement with the Seattle Education Association to bargain the school year calendar. A general framework for when we begin school or have designated breaks is outlined in the CBA agreement. However, each year, we must still come before the board to receive official approval for the final dates. The attached calendar provides all of those dates as outlined and holidays. So the first day of school, according to the CBA key dates formula, which was approved by the board when the CBA was ratified in 2015, that originated this language, states that the first day of school shall be the first Wednesday in September. This year, the first Wednesday in September will be September 2nd, 2020, which is before Labor Day. The key dates formula was originally bargained in the 2015-18 CBA as a tool for families and staff to provide guidelines for the calendar and so that dates weren't arbitrarily made. This calendar has also been shared with all 13 of our bargaining units and no concerns or objections were raised by our labor partners. We do have a labor group that talks about religious holidays and cultural observations and practices. That group has created supplemental materials and guidance to schools that will go out with the 2021 calendar if approved, and those are attached to the bar. At this point, I'll take comments.
Thank you, Chief Bergy. Are there any questions or comments from Directors? Director Rankin, you're always, you're right in that perfect eye.
I have a question or a comment. This is, I guess, just a comment, because I think, I know that this is in the CBA, that's a three-year agreement that was decided, this is the.
The term carries forward in the current agreement. So the original language happened in the 2015-18 bargaining agreement. The language has carried forward.
So I guess the, the issue at hand really was the communication out to families, that there were some assumptions made that school started the Wednesday after Labor Day, when in fact, it says in the CBA, it's the first Wednesday of September. My question is, I know that other districts, I, I guess I'm wondering why it's part of the collective bargaining agreement? I know that in other districts, there is, it comes before the board. For example, in Issaquah School District, there's a process where they approve a calendar, approve and publish a calendar three years at a time. And there's surveying that goes out based on what the, you know, what the holidays are, what the set dates are, and the number of, of school days goes out to, I know at least to teachers, maybe to families too, I'm not sure. And then it's, it's decided by the board and then published three years in advance. So I guess that's just sort of a general, like, could we explore doing something like that so that family, so that just we all kind of have more, more notice than six months ahead or?
Nine months ahead.
Nine months ahead.
I believe that, my understanding is that Chief Cod intends that conversation to happen in the executive committee.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Chief Cod expects for that conversation about the three-year perspective, outlining of the calendar to be discussed in the executive committee.
Okay, thank you.
Were there other questions or comments on the?
I just had one clarifying question. Do you, is the, the culturally, the cultural notes are those, is that the extent of the work group that was set? I thought there was a work group that was to be formed for the CBA that was going to have a broader discussion about how to make our calendaring more culturally responsive and, but I don't think this is that, because I thought that was due at the end of the month.
I'm going to let Michael Tamayo, President of SCA, answer that.
Sure, hi, Michael Tamayo, President of SCA. To your, to your question, Director Hampson, so the, out of this bargain came an agreement to put together a work group around creating, for lack of a better, better title, Equity Calendar, that didn't have to do with specific observances or dates, dates of school. That more had to do with what, what culturally appropriate accommodations could we recommend to schools based on, based on religious groups that aren't part of the traditional Judeo-Christian calendar in regards to testing school, school events and other kind of high-impact school times of the year. And so this had nothing to do with the actual school calendar starter and dates. It had more to do with developing recommendations for accommodations to mitigate any impacts that, that not, that non-traditionally represented religious groups. may need to consider during those high-impact times of year, test, testing being with the primary focus.
And so thank you for that answer, that's very helpful. And while we have you, because we've got a surprising number of comments about the Labor Day, pre-Labor Day start date, which is a, just a function of when the day falls in the calendar, which is twice every 10 years, that it's before, that that's the first Wednesday is, is before Labor Day. Any rationale as far as you're aware of from the teachers' union in terms of why a calendar-based system versus a federal holiday-based start date? And if you don't know, I understand.
This agreement came out of the 2015 bargain, which was memorable for many reasons. I can't remember the specific interest or value that came within, within regards to this provisions of the calendar. I do know that we did have a shared interest in having a mutual foundation to start the calendaring at, but other than that, I don't recall.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Director Hampson. Other directors have comments or questions, concerns? Okay. Seeing no further comments, questions, or concerns, Ms. Scheck, roll call, please.
Director Hersi.
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith? Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
All right, item number three.
We move that the school board, that the board approve resolution number 2019-20-3, sorry, 2019 slash 20-3. A resolution of the Board of Directors of Seattle School District Number One, King County, Seattle, Washington, to declare that the lives of Black students matter, as well of the lives of all of our underserved students. That we affirm the demands of the Black Lives Matter at school movement, and that we encourage participation district-wide in national Black Lives Matter at school week from February 3rd to 7th, 2020. As attached to this board action report, immediate adoption is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
Thank you, President. I used to call you President Harris. Dr. Harris, I, that's true. I, I was just, wanted to open it up to Directors Rivera Smith and Director Hersi, who led...
Actually, I have a point of clarification and legal advice, please, from Chief Counsel Narver. It was stated during some of the comments tonight, they've run together, frankly, that we had to reintroduce this every year. Now, I looked over at you and I said, "No." And I got the distinct impression, this is not a year-by-year resolution. Would it be illegal and out of order to say, "In support of Black Lives Matter, February 3 through 7, 2020, and thereafter, so we don't have to do this every year, so we can take a much stronger stand than we have already"?
So I'm not aware of anything that would restrict, that restricts the board to only doing this on an annual basis. This resolution as drafted pertains to this particular week in 2020.
And thereafter, as an amendment, would be out of line?
If you said the, the first school week in February or something like that. I don't believe there's any prohibition in our policies of any restriction on doing that. This has been, this was drafted to apply to this particular week, but I don't think the board would be prohibited from making it an ongoing...
Well, then I make a motion for an amendment to put this into perpetuity until it's withdrawn, and we have a second.
Well, I would need specific language to be added to the existing motion so that the record is very clear on exactly the language the board would be voting on.
And can we backfill that as a scrivener?
Can I, can I just ask a question too, particularly because Director Rivera Smith and Director Hersi created, you know, did a ton of the legwork on this to see if, first to get your thoughts, but also if there's any thing to add to what you're describing, because I want to be thoughtful that they were the ones that led this, so.
Yeah, absolutely, so I have no problem with that. I think that my first inclination is that there is also a benefit to talking about this every year so that we don't forget about it. More than happy to put thereafter, but I would also like to see, you know, let's also have a conversation about what we can do annually to reinforce it. Because I think we heard very clearly from our student representatives that they want firm policy change. And I think bringing this up while it is tedious from year to year is also incredibly important to remind us and help us center our work, especially as it relates to our strategic plan. Do not disagree, but do want to find a way so that we can have this conversation annually.
So, so likewise, I, I think it would be super-duper awesome to make this for perpetuity. My only slight concern is because this year is a little different, we changed it this year, it's not the exact same as the last two years, which was, was very intentional. And we threw in the, that we affirm the demands of the Black Lives Matter at school movement. Those will change every year, so we would automatically approve them without having seen them. I mean, I don't know that we would disapprove with them, but we'd have no way of knowing what will be a year to year. Those parts will change. I feel responsible now, because I think I was the one who said, "Hey, we should put these in here," because I was really excited about that. But that might muddy that up a bit, just because that clause in there would help us reaffirm something we haven't seen yet. Yeah, but maybe, maybe we do a new one later that, that, you know, isn't, that isn't changing every year.
Other director comments, questions, concerns? Director Hersi?
Just wanted to speak to the resolution that... Thank you, I appreciate it. So this was a real honor to work on, especially because it was the first actual policy that Director Rivera Smith and Director DeWolf and I got to work on together. There was a lot of workshopping that went on to it. And I think that especially for me, there were a couple of really key changes that we placed into the resolution this year. First, including the names of individuals who were killed and murdered in fatal altercations with police. I think that that really humanizes this piece of legislation, and is not just lip service, and it actually lends to the idea that we are trying our hardest to not only see, but to also engage with our community in that way. And by putting the names of those Black individuals who met their face at the hands of police violence, for me at least, and I know for a lot of our students, really pushes us to the next step in really trying to figure out, how do we understand it? How do we engage and how do we honor and how do we respect the purpose behind saying "Black Lives Matter," right? And I think the other piece that Director Rivera Smith alluded to was also including the demands of the National Black Lives Matter at school movement. Within the resolution was also very key, and I think that it takes a step, not a full leap, but definitely a step toward what our students were telling us earlier. And I really do want to think about ways, whether it comes through, you know, the demand is directly related to a policy that could be put forth through the Operations Committee or the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, thinking about how can we continue to work with those students specifically and students across our district? In thinking about tangible ways that we can meet this, because I am not interested in letting this be lip service. I think it does a disservice to all of our Black students and all of our students furthest away from educational justice. We owe it to them to do better, we owe it to them to figure this out, but most of all, we owe it to them to have them at the table while these decisions are being made. Especially because truly holding us accountable, they show up more so than almost any other student group. And honoring that voice and centering that voice is something that I am willing to make a major priority, not just for me, but I encourage our board to do so as well.
All right, any final comments, questions, or concerns?
I have a question for Diane, actually, Diane Becker. Because as we were doing this, one question I had in this was, we have a clause, a part of it that says, I don't have it in front of me right now, but, says about how our, our staff have been working with, towards a curriculum. And I wanted to change this to, "We have created a curriculum," but I hadn't really got clarity on, did we in fact create a curriculum? And how have we gone about sharing that with our schools?
The Ethnic Studies Advisory Group, under the direction of Tracy Castro-Gill, they do a curriculum for the week. And then that is pushed out to schools via school leader communicator. So it's only done for that week, and it's done, it has been, it's, it's been lifted up by the advisory group at this point. I believe it should expand and go much beyond that group and have others involved, including students.
I'll follow up a question to that. Is that related, I know that, you know, this is before my time as a board director, but I know that there was also some work done by Jesse Higopian and others. Is that aligned, is it the same? I'm just making sure.
I personally can't speak to that, that was before my time.
For both of us, I guess.
I wrote a resource guide that ended up being distributed to the teachers.
Great.
But it wasn't official curriculum, it was like, it was, it started as an FAQ for parents, and then Jesse and I worked together and distributed it. But it wasn't, that was the first year that it was Black Lives Matter School Day, but it wasn't, it wasn't adopted curriculum.
And to just create a public record, I would be interested in seeing, what does that look like to have that conversation more than just within Black History Month? Because again, I think that that does a disservice, that we couch and compartmentalize when we think about Black excellence to one month out of the year. And the fact that it's the shortest month doesn't add any, you know, substance to that for me either. So, you know, as our new Curriculum and Instruction Chair, that is something that's very important to me, and hopefully a conversation that we can have going forward.
All right. Ms. Scheck, roll call, please.
Director Rankin?
Yes, absolutely.
Director Rivera Smith?
Yes.
Director Hampson?
In honor, in honor of Charlene Lyles, yes.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
In honor of all the Black men and women who came before me and laid down their lives, aye.
Director Mack?
Yes.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Congratulations.
If we move on, can I just say, it really feels good as the, one of many African-American educators across the state, African-American board directors across the state, to be a part of a district that loudly and proudly affirms that Black lives matter. And I am very, very thankful to be a part of this board and to sit on this dais with individuals who agree that our students, especially those furthest away from educational justice, but especially our Black students, matter. And that, to me, just makes my heart sing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, action item number four.
I move that the Seattle Board authorize the superintendent to take all necessary actions to resolve the claim for damages dated March 26, 2019, brought by a former student and his mother against the district, which would include payment of district funds in the amount of $475,000 in exchange for waiver and release of all claims following any necessary court approval. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second the motion.
I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, John Cirque, Chief Deputy Legal Counsel for the district. What you have before you is a board action report where we're requesting authorization to settle a claim that was filed with the district. We have carefully reviewed the claim over the last eight months. I also want to let the community know that we did have two executive sessions with the school board to inform you of the facts. So the purpose of this meeting is not to go through the facts in detail. We did that in an executive session, since this is a claim and it could result in a lawsuit if it is not approved and signed off on. So that's why the brevity and the background information about the claim, but it does involve a student who was potentially released to the wrong parent, who was therefore injured and sustained damages. This was a difficult settlement that went back and forth, but we do believe that the dollar amount, although high, is warranted in this situation to compensate the family for the injuries that were sustained. So does our recommendation from the General Counsel's Office, Chief Counsel Narver and myself, that you approve and authorize the superintendent to sign a settlement agreement with the family. At this time, the former student is still a minor, so we'll be asking the court for guardian unlitum approval, so there'll be some review before it is finally approved. But we need to get your approval to move forward with the court. If I can answer any questions, I'm happy to do so.
Director Harris?
Working in this business, and always on the side of victims and plaintiffs, I want to applaud you personally and our legal department for availing ourselves of alternative dispute resolutions, specifically mediation with gifted mediators, without going to expensive, painful-for-the-victims litigation. I, this feels like a substantial change, and the level of detail, conversation, and input from our legal team in executive session is highly appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other director comments, questions, or concerns? Thank you for all your work on this. Ms. Scheck, roll call, please.
Director Harris? Director Hersi? Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Rankin? Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. Number five.
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to accept the U.S. Department of Education School Climate Transformation Grant in the amount of $3,719,936 across five years.
Second the motion.
This came to A&amp;F on December 9th for approval, so I will invite, no? If you'd like to come up, if anybody has any questions or comments or concerns, this is the time. Yes, we, we had this at introduction at our last meeting. Any burning questions, comments, concerns from directors? Okay, Ms. Scheck, roll call, please.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris? Director Hersi? Director Mack? Director Rankin? Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you for sticking around.
Nothing, huh?
Okay, action item number six. Number six.
I move that the school board approve the new course additions for the 2020 to 21 school year as attached to the board action report.
Okay, Chief DeBacher, any updates, revisions, or anything else we need to know about?
There have been a few updates to the bar from when we were here two weeks ago. We have visited with the requesters of the courses to make some of the suggested changes. All references to Ethnic Studies were removed, and that was in consultation with Tracy Castro-Gill. We have also updated a couple of the titles in the visual and fine arts to more accurately reflect those courses. We have changed wording as a result of Director Hampson's concerns around some of the wording within the descriptions. And with that, we have eight courses to recommend for addition to the new course catalog for the next year. One in career and tech ed, one in a pre-apprenticeship, which will work very nicely with the Community Workforce Agreement, two in language arts, and four in fine arts. With that, I stand for questions.
Thanks, Chief DeBacher. Any directors have comments, questions, concerns? And this came through CNI on December 10th for approval. Director Harris?
Was this just with consultation with the Ethnic Studies Manager or with the advisory group as well?
For these specific changes to these two courses that were in question, it was with the program manager, Ms. Gill.
Thank you.
All right, any more comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Ms. Scheck, roll call, please.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Rankin? Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Harris? Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
All right, final number seven.
I move that the school board accept the work performed under contract P5068 with Pacific Mobile Structures, Inc. for the "Provide, Move, and Set Up Portable Classroom Modules at Multiple School Sites" project as final. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Thank you, and this came through Ops on January 9th for approval, and I just wanted to update one thing. This would have been on our February 5th legislative meeting, and it would have been the only item in action and/or introduction. So we moved, the executive committee moved this from the 5th to today, so that's why you're seeing it today, folks, as an introduction and an action item. Again, this was brought forward from Ops for approval. Do folks have questions, comments, or concerns about this? Do folks have questions, comments, or concerns about this final acceptance? Director Mack, any important things we should flag?
Just, just to give context, this, I'm thinking of a different one. This is for the 2015 portables placements, so this was the year that we had how many portables? It was kind of out of control.
Nineteen.
Nineteen portables, so nineteen classrooms were added. Yeah, okay. So anyway, this is a, a number of years late to get the final acceptance done, but yay, final acceptance.
This is great.
It's all over but the tears.
Confetti.
If there are any other questions, comments, or concerns from directors? All right, Ms. Scheck, roll call, please.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
The board is now immediately recessing the regular board meeting into executive session to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price, and to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or leased when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of decreased price, RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101 B C. The executive schedule is set, is set, the executive session is scheduled for 30 minutes within an anticipated end time of 9:33 PM.